Yep, okay, let's call a mean to order. It's Tuesday, August 29, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, minutes or reports received and filed?
I had July 2017 auditor night report. I also want to file the indirect cost study that we received that we have to do for child support and circuit. So, you guys will look at it.
Okay. Uh, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, we've been cutting for stadium in Jefferson round about tomorrow morning. I've got other stuff I already committed to do, so I probably be there, but Chris said-
Chris said he would do it, so I appreciate that.
Thanks. And we got another meeting Thursday morning, incentives task force Thursday afternoon. So.
I don't think I have anything else.
I've got Truman Foundation Board Meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, United Way kickoff 11:30. I'm not gonna be able to make the incentive task force, so I hope one of you guys can maybe do that. That's all I got.
I'm gonna try to be there.
Okay. Yeah, I was talking to Missy.
Yeah, I don't know. If I can't, then I'll get ahold of her and get to scoop on it, but we don't get really vote on anything anyway. It's just more of a blessing.
Yeah. Okay.
I like giving blessings, though.
Okay. Appointments by commission, reappointment of Larry Benz to TIF Commission. We received notification that your term was expiring, and I sent you an email to see if you'd be interested in serving again, yeah.
Tough schedule.
It had to keep you from retiring. I would just keep you on this thing.
Take that as a yes.
I think so.
Did you say will you or you will?
No, I just said I gave him the option of, you know, if he didn't want to serve, but it's, you know, we don't have that many meetings. I think I've had two in three years, so.
Yeah. Just like everything else, if you don't want to be on it anymore, just find your own replacement. Let you. I don't know how that works.
Okay. Uh, do we need to, just accepting is good enough?
No, we probably don't vote on it.
I move that we reappoint Larry Benz to the TIF Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations! We'll double your pay.
He's signing them all.
Uh, bids and contracts, EMS Medical Director contract renewal.
We made the changes that you requested. Dr. Ludy agreed to those. Jill made the changes to the contract, and he has signed it.
Okay.
For one year with two renewable.
One year with two renewals at 3%. Lumped everything together.
He's doing a good job, so I want to keep him.
Good, Jeff, you want to say it?
Yes, I'm on it. That's all we made. We made it out before.
I move that we sign the medical director agreement with Dr. Ludy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Signing of service agreement with Central Bank.
I'm sorry. I'm just saying, I'm sorry.
Signing of service agreement with Central Bank. Did we have some questions on that, or?
This was, basically, we bid out the bank accounts, and in July 1, Central Bank was the, the one that received the bid. This is a service agreement that they're able to do repurchasing and investment part of it. I guess there was a holdup in this because at the bottom it talks about the county's investment policies. Currently, we don't have investment policy. We've been tossing it back and forth with the Treasury's office and getting different samples of different policies. Um, I would suggest, I know we've talked to Dave Myers too, and he made a few little changes, but I would suggest we go ahead and sign the investment, the service agreement now, but the policies that we form a committee, be it the Auditor's Office, the Commission, the legal part with Jill, and then the Treasury's Office, we come up with some policies we all are comfortable with, um, and then we'll bring the policies back and rise for approval then. If we rather wait on the service agreement until then, that's fine, but Jill has looked at the service agreement part of this.
Yeah, I talked to Dave Meyer yesterday too, and he said he would, he would sit down with us and, and kind of go over that, which-
And he said he'd be willing to, I mean, the kind of thing we just came up with this morning.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could, we could do this, but, uh-
If I could interject, I think that the, uh-
Try to get Mark to come here.
Do you have a question?
I think we've all talked to Dave Meyer in the last week or so. I talked with him a couple of times yesterday, and it's clear, really, that Central Bank wants the investment policy in place, so, more than anything else, so they can speedily get us, the Treasurer and the Commission, to sign off on an investment. And in other words, if there are Treasuries or agencies that are available, and they think that, you know, moving quickly to, to purchase those investments would be in our benefit to get a better yield, they didn't want to get it tied up with the Treasurer and the Commission and the Auditor and the Finance Officer. So, the idea that Dave would be part of a committee that would go over the investment policy, I'm not sure, well, I'm pretty sure he doesn't want to be involved in that. His really, his, his, his thing is brevity, and I know in talking to Debbie that at the county level, you know, our, our concern is probably threefold. One is that everybody feel comfortable about the investments that might be available for us to, to use, to invest in. Other one is that Debbie expressed some concerns, I think that she and the Auditor had, uh, but those are concerns, really, that the Central Bank should not be involved in. Central Bank shouldn't be sitting on a committee that involves decisions about whether or not to buy their products and which products to buy. So, that investment policy really is, I mean, I think the, the input from Central Bank, we're getting it right now by talking to Dave Meyer over the telephone or through emails.
Well, I don't think he's talking about sitting on, on a committee long-term. We're just, talking to him is, you know, we've got, we can't put, you know, we've got some money we could possibly put in long-term investing. We've got other things coming up next year, the year after that, that we have to, you know, that money has to be accessible to us-
Sure, right.
-without, you know, paying a penalty to take it out, so.
Of course.
Uh, we can't just, you know, give them this bunch of money and say, here, invest it, and then next year when we start doing some other stuff, that money's tied up for another three years or five years.
I don't know anybody that's suggesting that we give them a pile of money and tell them, ask them to invest it for us.
But that's, I mean, that's one of the things we were talking to him about is-
Right.
Is, uh, but I, I think, uh, I think we still need to, uh, be a part of it.
That Central Bank needs to be a part of it?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
We, we need to be a part of it.
We need to, absolutely. I, I've already talked to Debbie several times. I talked to, uh, Jill, who, who, I guess at this point isn't, the drafts that I've been working on with Debbie haven't necessarily been crossing your desk, so.
I didn't, I didn't buy them. Those came from Central Bank.
Right, and Central Bank got them from, you know, for your information, for the Commissioner's information. That draft, draft investment policy for the county that Central Bank provided came from the state Treasurer's website, as did mine, uh, and when I first became County Commissioner in 2009, uh, in my first several months as Treasurer, I put to the Commission a draft version of that investment policy mirroring the state Treasurer's, you know, draft policy that's on their website. That's the same one that Central Bank provided to Debbie or whomever with the Commission, and that's the same one that I have been using. So, they're nearly identical. I think this, one of the sticking points is who makes the investment decision. The copy that I got from Debbie some time ago reflects, I think, a change in that draft on the state Treasurer's website that has the Commission making the investment decision, and I, my version, of course, has what, as far as I know, all the rest of the counties in the state of Missouri, the Treasurer makes that decision, but of course, you make it after you bring it to the attention of the County Commission, the Finance Officer, the County Auditor, and make sure everybody's on board, and if anybody has any concerns or if anybody has any problems with what's being done, obviously, a, an intelligent professional Treasurer heeds that advice and those comments and makes adjustments accordingly, which may mean not even investing in something he or she originally had proposed. Um, so that, that's, I think, the biggest sticking point in our investment policy. If that necessitates a committee, I'm all in favor of that, um, so.
I think we were just saying that because of the way, you know, our money is, is being allocated, that we, we need to be aware, you know, the, the finance and-
Right.
-our Auditor and things like that, so we're not-
You don't want to mess up your cash flow.
Yeah.
Right now, there's about 34 million in the bank, and, uh, right, I've, I've asked Debbie and Kristen several times about us working on a figure that is above and beyond what the cash needs of the county are, including capital improvements, projects coming up this year or in the near future. Let me know that amount, and then that gives me the ability to turn to our depository, Central Bank, and work out a series of investments, and then come to you all for your input, as well as Debbie and Kristen, and, um, because right now, rates have moved up in the last six months. We're leaving money on the table every month. We don't invest anything, um, and, so at the very least, there's, you know, not to, beat a dead horse here, but there's 30 million that we immediately get each month, the three month Treasury plus 16 basis points. Anything over that, we get the three month Treasury rate minus 15 basis points. So, right now, we have 4 million that needs to be invested as soon as possible. So hopefully, we'll be able to work out this investment policy and work out the provisions to everybody's, uh, acceptability, so, or acceptance, yeah.
I think that the, the committee may need to be sort of a long-range planning committee also, because I know that there's things that, we have a good handle on, on the budget and what we're doing in the next 12 months, but sometimes 18 months, depending on where we're at, but we don't always know what your guys' plans are, and if there's something big on the horizon that you're planning on, if he's going to be investing for multiple years, we need to kind of have an idea of what those things are so that we can give him a good number. We don't want to tie those funds up if there's something on the horizon that you guys are thinking about that's going to be spending down our reserves. We don't want to tie that money up, so even though we have a good handle on, on that short term, we may not know what your long-term plans are.
I'd agree with that, and maybe a standing committee, I agree with Kristen, that that would be in order, um, and one note, if for some reason another Treasurer years down the road because of this investment policy and the committee, somehow the county stumbles and they have a laddered portfolio that they need to cash out some CDs or some Treasuries because of some unforeseen cost that the Commission decides that they need to pay, you know, attention to, all the investments I and most, any Treasurer I would imagine would ever make allow us to lose only interest that you would have gotten if you kept the investment to maturity. And in other words, if you had to cash out, let's say, $2 million in investments, you're not going to lose any of your principal in that, uh, transaction. What you lose is the yield that you would have earned had you kept it to maturity, so, but of course, we don't want to lose any yield once we buy, we purchase an investment instrument, but Kristen's got it right. You want to make sure that, even if I got a figure right now, say, in the next 30 or 60 days, from them and through the Committee, you know, who, who knows in a year and a half or two and a half years what might happen, and so I think that's worth the Commission and, and everybody knowing that, no, as long as I'm Treasurer, I would never invest in anything that would lose principal because it had to be, uh, uh, pulled or cashed out before maturity. Never lose principal. You'd only lose interest, so, worst-case scenario.
Yeah. So, yeah, we weren't talking about having a committee with Dave Meyer sitting on it, so.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, that was not, that was never our-
So-
So do we need to, do we need to sign this?
If you want to sign the service agreement now, uh, I think Central Bank, because they are doing the investments now, the 30 million repurchasing and different stuff like that, they probably need this signed. I'm not sure what would happen if something would happen, and we don't have policies in this state, we do have policies, but I can assure you that we are working on the policies to get that done.
This, sir-
Well, this I pointed out to Debbie, this is the same thing we've been signing for 20 years.
Yeah.
Or however long.
Really, the thing that's happening right now, each and every night, there's a, a repurchase agreement that allows the bank to sweep our accounts. All of our money are pulled out of our demand deposits every evening. Uh, it goes out there liquid to the rest of the market, and so we earn a, a rather modest amount of yield each night. They're doing that despite us not having actually signed this agreement. That's why we probably need to sign it and get it to them, because they need to be in compliance with federal rules and regulations. That's really what, what necessitates this. The whole idea about investing and the investment policy for the county, that's a different beast, because right now, there are no, there are no investments. There's nothing out there that Central Bank has done for us. There's no money that they've invested for us. So, so the timing is good. Go ahead and sign this like we've been doing that for years, and then the rest of us will move together on an investment policy draft, bring it to you, I guess as a committee, and move from there. Then the investments will be made only after the Committee gets their draft in order and brings it for you all for approval. Then at that point, investments can, can be made, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to approve this service agreement.
Good, Jeff?
Yeah.
I move that we sign the services agreement with Central Bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017 dash SS-06 Furno Cotsel Source Approval.
Understand that you guys approved the purchase for one cot. The ad had already been run, so we just need to get it approval entered into the minutes and then it's signed off on.
This is sole source. I move that we approve the sole source advertisement for Furno Cots.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of contract with Keith for inmate commissary.
Uh, we've been going back and forth on, on this with the, well, Jill made some changes to this contract. We have not received it back from them. I'd ask that we take this off the agenda and place it on Tuesday's agenda whenever we can get it back again.
Okay.
Okay. We can do that.
Yes, I will.
Okay. 2016 dash 27 Renewal One Welding and Metal Fabrication.
Um, we bid this last year, and whenever I approached the vendors about a renewal, we had one maintain the same pricing and one actually reduce pricing, so this is just the renewal.
So, what, how did we award it last year?
Lowest and best with availability, and there was two respondents.
Chris, what we have is being able to-
Use somebody when they're available.
Right, it, it's just a matter, if we take something to them, especially in a winter time, if they've got a project, can't get to it right away, we can take it to the other one.
Okay. This just locks in a price, and then we don't have to bid this stuff hourly rate or something? So we need to do these separately, I guess?
Yeah.
I mean, it's renewal with two different ones, or?
I would just say we're gonna approve the renewal with Vogli and whatever the other one was.
Gardner, okay. I move that we approve and sign the Renewal One Contract for Welding and Metal Fabrication with Gardner Welding and Vogli welding.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of the State SEMA Grant?
Yes, this is the grant that we put in for back in February, if you recall. The money's finally been released from the federal government, so, uh, the total grant award is $132,335. Half of that is our share, uh, so we were awarded $66,167.60. So, once we get this signed and approved, uh, we can already get our reappraisal for the first two forks that's set in there, it's already been sent. Uh, once we get this signed and approved, it'll release the money.
Bless you, bless you.
About $24,000 higher than last year. That's what we were doing. Two thousand. Do you have a question?
Aye.
I move that we sign the State SEMA Grant Award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, Accounts Payable Review.
I'd ask for approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Is this a big one? Okay. I move that we approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
I have one in there.
Yes, you do.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Six.
This is for $10,000. It is for Juvenile. It is for the detention assessment tutoring program grant. No action today. Again, $10,000 for in and out. Thank you.
Oh, 2018.
I'm moving you along there, buddy.
Okay. Signing my life away today.
You writing checks?
And I didn't bring my checkbook with me today.
I'll go get it for you.
So 2018 EMS charges?
So, uh, I brought the 2018 charge recommendations for EMS. Um, I brought that forward last week. That figure has been factored into the budget, and you wanted to study it more and come back this week.
Well, we're still kind of playing catch-up, right, from considering we didn't, we hadn't raised rates-
Right, there were no increases since you took it over.
Since we took it over from Capital Region.
Correct.
So we're, this is the final catch-up, so we're-
This is basically, yeah.
We're-
If anything needed a, a bigger increase than what I would consider usual and customary in 19, it would be mileage. We're probably still lagging a little behind on mileage, but, um, I didn't feel comfortable raising it any further than I did. And you can see in the right-hand column, the far-right column is the average in our area right now for each charge, and I think there's one charge that maybe exceeds it a little, but everything else is, is under it, is under the average.
The history is there, and that's what we started when we took it over with Capital Region, and then we changed it in 16, I think. We changed it in March of 17, and then he's proposing changing it now for September. I know, I just, my two cents, the reason we didn't change it all those other years, we were just seeing how the sales tax part of that was going, you know, and how much operating, uh, inter-price fund was going to be for the county, so.
Well, it's been fairly healthy.
By the sales tax part, yes.
I'm, I'm not crazy about raising it again already. I know compared to other ones that it is lower, but that's part of having it tax-funded too, is that we've got, uh, better pricing for the citizens that are using it, so it keeps the price down. I, um, the cost of medical stuff is outrageous the way it is, so I'm not crazy about it.
Yeah, see, I'm just, yeah, I think we need, we need to all be on the same level playing field, and, you know, we didn't, we didn't raise it for so long, I think, you know, we're not raising them up where, you know, we're, we're way above everybody else. We're just, we're just-
Then we should get more business, because we've got lower prices.
I think when somebody calls an ambulance, they probably don't ask, what are you charging?
So we can charge them whatever we want to.
Some of them do, I think.
Well, basically, we are here.
Yeah.
It's not a supply and demand thing at all. This is, I think, it's overcharged all the way around, and if we're trying to keep up with the other ones, we're overcharging as well.
Well, I may have made an incorrect assumption. I, I assumed that we wanted to reduce our reliance on our, on our tax, so if that, if that's not the case, then, then I made an incorrect assumption, um, and then Kristen and I'll have to go back to the budget, recalculate the revenue projections, and increase the, the tax.
So if we raise the rates and try to make this more self-sufficient, then we should get rid of the tax, or lower the tax, right? Because it's not going to be self-sufficient, or it's not going to be relying on the tax.
I don't think it's ever going to be self-sufficient.
We can get it close.
I mean, you can, well, I think you can reduce the subsidy-
Right.
-from the tax, but, um, even with that, you know, the subsidy goes to run your day-to-day operations, it doesn't necessarily run the capital requests, you know, I mean, if we have big capital requests, then that comes directly out of the sales tax, so, um, but, I mean, I agree, I think, you know, I'd like to see it get closer rather than the subsidy get larger. Obviously, if there's excess in the tax, then we can, we can look at rolling back the taxes further. Um, I mean, whether we do that or not, that's a whole nother topic, but, um-
But if you or I use an ambulance, we're going to be paying for everybody else that's not have to pay for it. And the more we charge, the more we're paying, unless they're having to pay for it, we're just subsidizing the people that don't pay.
Welcome to America, dude.
We're doing that, we're doing that now, Jeff.
That's, that's all about-
So you're gonna keep doing that? You're gonna keep promoting that?
No, I mean, that's-
That's what you're promoting right now.
No, that's, it's-
I, I don't want to promote that, I mean-
No, but that's-
I'd like for everybody to pay.
No, you-
Sales tax, and everybody is paying. You got out-of-towners coming- Sales tax, then everybody is paying. You got out-of-towners coming to pay for ambulance service.
Well, no, no. Everybody that's got an EBT card is not paying sales tax. So, like, their, their food is tax-free, so as long as they eat, they don't pay any taxes.
They still buy other goods and services.
As long as they're living in government housing, they're not paying any taxes either, so.
If they go and buy soda, they're still paying taxes.
Yeah.
And cigarettes.
A little bit, a little bit.
They're not paying it on their drugs, but...
Well, I will do whatever is the pleasure of the commission, but I, I think if we don't at least have some sort of increase, we're leaving money on the table from folks who are, who do pay their bills and have insurance, so.
But, so I mean, regardless of what we charge, most insurance companies negotiate a rate with our billing company.
Correct.
I mean, so...
A few, a few, like Blue Cross and Blue Shield, some others generally pay 80% of whatever you charge, but a lot of insurance companies negotiate some kind of a, a rate. I don't know if we have any of those contracts in place. Medicare and Medicaid are standalone. You get what you get from them, but I don't know that we have any, I can check with our billing company, but I'm, I don't know that we have any other contracts in, in effect. I'll, I can check that, but I don't think we do.
I get what you're saying, Jeff. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's right, our system that, you know, 50% of the people pay and 50% of the people get it for nothing. I mean, but that's, that's our system, and I don't like it at all.
I'm not asking you to agree with that, but if we're gonna raise the rates, don't keep raising the budget. All we're doing is raising rates and increasing spending, and it's, we've already increased a lot this year in EMS to try and give them the tools and to get it to be the best.
Well, but just because we increase the rates doesn't mean we have to pass a budget that increases spending.
Well, that's what the budget's based on, is these rates. So if that budget's based on these rates, then I'm assuming it's gonna be based on an increase in revenue. So. I'm not totally against it, just, I don't, I don't know. Right now, I'm not for it. And I know you need to know something so that you can proceed with budgets, so.
September 1st the deadline.
Oh, heck, you got, you're...
The best for budget.
I mean, I just, I, I'm with you. I'm not crazy about it, but I, I mean, if you or I were providing a service and our costs go up, we have to, we have to charge more. And so, that's kinda the way I look at it. I mean, we should be, if you and I were bidding on a job and we were very low on the job, we would take a look at what our hourly rates are and maybe increase our hourly rates, because we wouldn't wanna be, you know, real low on a job, you know? I, I wanna be a dollar low or whatever, I wanna be right there, so maximize our, our gains, so. I mean, I...
This isn't even bidding. I mean, you don't get to make a phone call and say, "Hey, I'm dying right now, what are your prices?"
Right.
So, it's, somebody take care of me, and if, if it's our ambulance or, you said Boone County's is the higher ones, you say Boone County had to for whatever reason, and you gotta pay their rates, but this should be the same across the board to me.
Well, basically, it's gonna make it pretty much the same across the board.
Should be based on what Medicare's gonna pay.
Except for, except for Boone County.
Well, but if Boone County comes in for mutual aid and they pick you up, you're gonna pay their rate.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And if you take a helicopter ride, you're gonna pay $20,000 or $30,000.
That's what I was worried about on the eclipse, was, we might have to be using the staff for life if we had all the traffic.
I mean, we can even approach budget, you know, with the assumption that we're either going to do the new charges or not do them and, and proceed from there. We don't, I don't think we have to make a decision right now. You're wanting to do this effective January 1.
Correct.
But it just makes it a lot easier, and you know what it's gonna be, and probably everybody, so they can work on the numbers, but we don't have to.
So if you're wanting to... If we build it this way, if, if the sentiment is to do something different, then we can go in and, and re-figure our calculations on the revenue side. This is my first time through the budget, so I don't know at what point it gets carved in granite. So, that's why I brought these at this time of the year.
Oh, yeah, it makes more sense to do this now and know what you're gonna base your budget on, so.
This is basically our final kinda catch-up.
Yeah.
To make us, to make us equal.
But then everybody else sees our raise.
Jeff, but if you...
Then they're gonna raise theirs, go, "Well, now the middle's not here anymore," because they raised theirs up, now the middle's here, so they need to raise theirs.
I think we're gonna see some interesting changes, like with Callaway County and, and all these others too, but that's beside the point. We're looking at Cole County EMS. It's, by being cheaper, it's not gonna get us, we're not gonna get more calls because we're cheaper than, than other ambulance systems. This, uh, this isn't gonna, it's not gonna get us more business, it's not gonna get us less business. We're just gonna keep doing the same calls, it's just gonna bring, you know, a little bit more money in where we should be.
Because we're basically a monopoly here.
Yeah?
Um, I'm good with the charges and leaving them going forward for the, in the budget, so, I mean, if we're gonna approve them today, I mean, I would probably vote to approve them, but if we don't need to do that, I don't know when we have to do that.
So basically, just go with the assumption that we're gonna do the proposed charges and we can actually do a formal vote later, or you just wanna go ahead and say, "Go with it now"? I mean, whatever, it don't matter either.
I would just go with it now.
We're thinking in terms of direction.
I just hate to have Jerry keep having to come back.
Oh, I keep him.
Oh, come on. I thought he was supposed to come every week.
I thought maybe have a week or two.
On a standing in July.
But we wouldn't even see you, here we go, "Where's Jerry?" I mean, I'm going with wait, but I'd just soon, just go ahead and approve it and move on.
All right, I move that we adopt the proposed 2018 charges for EMS effective January 1st of 18.
I'll second. You wanna do a roll call?
It don't matter, I'll just say no after y'all say yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed?
No. Or yes to no. Nay.
Aye and nay.
All right, there, we got it.
Okay, we got that.
We're almost done, man, we're almost out of here.
Yeah, transfer for...
I didn't agree with Jeff today.
I know. Transfer for Accurate Controls Computers.
This actually should've came under a closed session, because it has to do with security electronics. I'd ask, since you're already gonna be open for, for security issues, I'd ask that I either be heard in closed session this time, or you can put me in closed session the next Tuesday.
Okay.
We've got it under security for closed session already, but I don't know. I think it's on the agenda, it just needs to be moved to this closed session.
Yeah.
Under security. I'm fine with moving it to, and just getting it done today.
Yeah, let's, let's get it done today.
All right with that, Jill?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Did I tell her the wrong one, John? Sorry about that.
No, no, that was, that was me, actually.
Okay. I didn't know if I missed something.
Okay, back to Jerry. EMS 24-hour, 12-hour shift transition.
Okay, we've begun the work. It, it's rather difficult right now in the EMS world in Cole County, but we are going to overcome this and move forward with 12-hour shifts in 2018. That being said, I needed an answer to a couple of questions that I emailed you in terms of our transition and what we were gonna do with these folks, so it'll help them pick a, pick a shift moving forward, particularly the 24-hour to 12-hour shifts. So you'll recall, when Paramedics Plus was here, they recommended changes to the salary rates of the EMTs and paramedics displaced by 12- and 24-hour shifts, by $2 an hour for EMTs and $3 an hour for paramedics. We haven't formally moved on that yet, but I took the liberty of including that in my 18 budget, and that, that is already in place for the, roughly 12 to 14 people who currently reside on a 24-hour shift that are moving to 12-hour shifts. And to be honest, I, I, I think having done that already and, and set the precedent, if we don't, we're gonna create some salary disparity, that when we do actually conduct our salary audits, gonna create issues downstream. Not only that, given the fact we've done it before, it's, it's the right thing to do to help them offset their 12-hour loss and scheduled overtime. So I would kinda take these up one at a time, and I would recommend that you support that for those that are displaced, and we have those identified in the spreadsheet in the budget. That's where I got that $72,000 figure from that doesn't include benefits.
See, I thought we already had a differential between the 12 and the 24 hour.
It's a dollar and a quarter, it doesn't make...
Okay, so it's gonna be above that, basically?
Their hourly rate goes up, but their pay goes down because of their loss of overtime.
But I thought we had corrected that, so that way they were getting the same.
No.
Even with the extra overtime.
No, I had given you, early on, I'd given you some spreadsheets on what it would take, and it was quite a lot of money, so we, we tabled that until the 18 budget year. But then this issue came up, so, like I said, having done that for people in the past, I, if, if we don't do it now, we've created a disparity. People who've worked the same amount of time will be making significantly different money, and it, it's gonna put us in an awkward position when we, when we do a salary audit and we actually look at where people are at, because that, that's down the list of things to do.
I don't disagree with that at all. We did before, but I thought we had some, something with the 12-hour shift.
No, I'd given you quite a few numbers early on, and it was, it was a large amount of money it was gonna take to equalize the pay, and so we just deferred it.
Yeah, we had a shift differential of a $1.26 an hour, I think.
Yeah, between the 12 and 24.
Right.
And that was just when they started here. It wasn't when they picked up a different type of shifts anymore. It was just when they started.
Okay, so that was the starting pay, is what we did on, to get those to where they're equal, whether they're on 12 or 24.
Yeah.
Okay, now it's coming back.
Yeah. So, so if somebody were to move from a 12-hour to a 24-hour shift right now, their hourly pay would go down by $1.26, but our salary would go up because of the scheduled overtime, but their, their pay would go down. Conversely, when they switch out of that, we do a pay form and it increases by $1.26 an hour. But when, when we, we, Cole County and Paramedics Plus suggested doing away with the first round of 24-hour shifts, there was a deal struck at some point, where Paramedics Plus brought a recommendation forward to, instead of doing $1.26, do $2 and $3, and according to John, that helped soften the blow, and it didn't make up for the complete loss of wage, but it made up for a portion of it.
So was it $2 or $3 that...
Two for EMTs and three for paramedics.
Okay.
Yeah, if we did it earlier and we don't do it now, I think that's...
That's how we can, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm not, I'm not totally agreeing with that either, because if you do it the first time and that wasn't necessarily the right thing to do, you shouldn't do it the second time. So. Because now we got some salary differential and their pay differential that was just caused to buy that, trying to fix too.
Keep in mind that I'm gonna propose a, when we, when we get to the actual budget hearing, or whatever we call it, I'm gonna propose a salary range that has a top end. So, there will be people that are above the top end that, because of that, will not be eligible for an increase until that range moves.
And this would be there to kinda correct that? I think we kinda talked about that.
Yeah. Right, because you, the, I don't, I don't care if you, it would seem to me that any position is, is worth so much, and you just can't keep raising, giving raises on raises on raises, especially for long-term employees, because then there's no top end. And so, part of what I was, was going to propose was that we have a range that started at a certain point, stopped at a certain point, and if you're above that point, then you're not eligible for an increase, or you get a commission-approved one-time increase in the first of the year, but that, again, that's, that's for discussion for another time. But we're gonna have some people that exceed that amount, even if you pick the, the broadest range. I have a couple of range options that I'm gonna give you when, when it's time for that, but you're gonna have some people that are, that are above that.
Because you can also have people coming off a 24-hour shift that have been there the same amount of time as somebody on a 12-hour shift. They've both been there for 15 years. Now this guy's making $2 more an hour, causes a little hurt as well, so. Just because they were lucky enough to be on the 24-hour shift, they get this raise because they're being taken off of it. So, I don't know, there's different ways to look at it. I'm, I'm probably fine with it to make the transition, and since we're looking at doing, you know, the adjustments later on with the top of the scale and stuff anyway.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I, I gotta kinda look at it all together. I mean, obviously, we did the $2 an hour EMTs, the $3 an hour paramedics, you also got in here a dollar an hour night shift differential. I mean, to me, it's all one and the same, and, um...
Are we talking about the different, $1 for the night differential right now too, or just the two?
Well, Jerry hadn't brought it up yet, but, uh...
I was just focusing on the number one on there first.
Right, but then if we, you know, we start looking at trying to...
Well, I can give you my...
I mean, you say balancing out the, the pay, well, there ain't no way. I mean...
No, it's not, no, and again, I'm, I'm going to, what, what happened in the past happened in the past, and, and I wasn't here, I'm just left with what was done then and what, what we need to do now. So, again, my thought on the, on the night shift differential is, there's probably gonna be about eight or 10 employees that are gonna be forced to work nights, because, it, it have workdays for a long time because of this. And so, again, it's just, it's what's happening in our business right now. There, there's a lot of different kinds of differentials floating around, but it, it, it just seemed to me that, I, I ran the, the numbers a bunch of different ways, and, and one of the ways to, that, that wasn't adding a significant amount of budget cost, but eased the blow of these folks, was just adding a dollar to the night shift differential for those, for, it would have to be everybody that worked the, the night shift. So, and it, it will help us from a recruiting perspective as well, because, as I, I told you via email, and then we'll talk about next week, recruiting paramedics right now is monumentally difficult. We've had no applications for several months for paramedics, and, again, one of the ways to, to be able to recruit, whether it's part-time or full-time folks, is to be competitive with wages, and when, when folks around us are offering night shift and weekend differentials, and we don't do that, and I'm not saying that we should, we should do all of that, I just think the night shift differential... night shift differential for the 18-budget year is the first bite of the apple that we should take, so folks who maybe need the $1.00 an hour, can work nights instead of days, and those that are forced to have a little extra on their paycheck to help make it worthwhile. It's not a lot, but it's something that, I think the message is stronger than the money, actually. So, if you want to take this all together, I just needed to have some direction, because right now, everything's in limbo, and I'm trying to keep the chaos to a minimum and give folks the answers that they need and be as transparent as possible about where they're going to land and what shifts they're going to have moving forward, because this is a big adjustment for people who have been working two days a week and now are going to be working seven shifts of pay periods, they've got family issues, they've got a lot of things to address, so the more answers that we can give them more quickly, the less angst we're going to deal with down the road. That's why I asked that we address this this week, because we're meeting next week. We've got several budget, I'm sorry, scheduling options on the table that I put together, that supervisors have put together, that the crews have put together, and we've been having some town hall meetings to talk about what this is going to look like down the road, to allay any rumors and fears and all that stuff. And so, having the answers to these questions helps these folks look at their scheduling options downstream, so that they know what they're going to, where they're going to be at come January 1st, or the first pay period after January 1st.
Would the differential be for anyone that's scheduled to be the night shift, or anyone that picks up the night shift? So, if a day shift person picks up the night shift, are they getting a $1.00 extra an hour every time they work the night shift?
I don't see how we could do that. I think it's people assigned to work nights. Does the payroll system do that, Debbie?
It's going to be very difficult, then, rather than all of us.
No, I would think it would be people assigned to work the night shift, then. In which case, that $34,000 would be high, because that would just be, if all the people assigned night shift worked all their shifts, and that won't be the case, obviously.
Do you all do night shift differentials?
No, we don't do permanent shifts either, nor will we.
What's that, John?
I said, nor will we.
Do what?
Permanent shifts. We won't do permanent shifts, and we don't have a budget to do differential. But it's a different, I'm in a different world than he is, so.
Yeah, but if we give a 10, you're going to be asking.
No, no, it won't.
Oh, well, that, okay, that clicks on that.
So I guess, here's my fear, is that, I think we made a mistake when we did the $2.00 an hour EMTs and $3.00 an hour paramedics when Paramedics Plus was here. I understand the logic that happened behind that, but I think it was a mistake, and, you know, we tried to offset their pay, and I get that, but we had a differential in 24-hour and 12-hour shifts, and we deviated from that. Now we're looking at going down the same road, which I don't necessarily have a problem with, but if we're going to fix pay, I'd like to fix it all one time. And that's not, I mean, if we're going to look at a $1.00 an hour differential, if we're going to look at a weekend differential, I mean, I'd like to fix it all, because I don't want you coming back, and then somebody that transitioned from a 24 to a 12, now got a bump, now they get another bump for a dollar for a night differential, now they're going to work weekends, now they're going to get another bump.
No, this is it. I'm not a fan of weekend differential. If we could work out a weekend package, but that would take county policy change and all that, and so, by weekend package, I mean, do something like hospitals and some other agencies do, and that is, you work every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, four out of five, get full-time benefits and all that. That's, to me, a weekend incentive, if you will. That, I'm not as big a fan of the weekend incentive, the night shift differential means the most to the EMS world. And I'll be honest with you, there are groups out there paying $3.00 an hour. That's, to me, that's probably a little much for Cole County, but where the fix is going to come, Chris, I think, is, we have a disparity right now, where, for no rhyme or reason, we have people who've worked here 10 years that are making less than people who've worked here five years, and I cannot figure out why. And I've done some individual audits and looked at different things, and I'm not sure of that. To me, that's where the fix is going to come, is correcting some of that, and I'm not sure, to be honest with you, given the fact that we've had a merit-based system here, maybe somebody just had a bad year or something, and I have no way to really look at that and figure that out, but, to me, when the 24-hour shifts go away, they're gone. If the next guy that sits in this seat wants to bring him back, he's going to have to fight that fight with you guys, but in my tenure, we've made the decision now, we've let everybody know, we're dealing with all the issues that come about because of this that happens. It's kind of tumultuous down there, I don't mind telling you, but it'll get better and we'll move on. So, that's why I thought, given the fact we've done it before, we should do it now, and while we're doing it, we're going to have people displaced, and let's just try and do the best for the most that we can. The, you know, like I said, if we're only going to give it to the people that are, because of the way our payroll system works, that are designated night shift employees, then that $34,000 is significantly less, because that implies that everybody working the night shift works every shift, and when everybody has two weeks off a year, or three weeks off a year plus holidays, that's not going to happen. I would hazard a guess, it may be half that by the time it's all said and done.
So, somebody who works night shift, after six months says, "No, this isn't worth it, I want to go to a day shift," then they lose that dollar.
Then they'll do a pay form that takes the $1.00 an hour away.
And so, anybody that's gotten the $2.00 or $3.00 an hour bump would not be eligible for that.
It's up to you guys.
I mean, if you're working 24s, you're working nights and days, so why would your shift, why would your amount change? I mean, I guess, I guess the other thing that comes into play for me is a cap, is a salary range with a cap.
I have it done. I'll send it to you. I was just going to wait for the budget when we talked about payroll and salary issues. I'll send it to you right now, what I have put together. I have a couple of options for ranges, and you'll be able to see that, even with the larger range that I put together, we're going to have a few employees that are over top scale, that will not be eligible for increases moving forward. That's not uncommon in our industry. Everyone that I know of has a scale. We've just never had a top end, we've had bottom end, and we've had different ranges for different shifts, but we've never had an actual scale that I've been able to see. So, that's why I built that as part of the budget package, and it helps ease the blow of this as well, because either way, they're going to end up getting it, they just get it quicker this way, with a top end. That's why I recommended that we go ahead and do both now, and then you won't see me back about wages, except when we talk about what our increases are going to be for next year.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Yeah. No offense, but I don't need to be on the agenda every week, I can just come listen.
I mean, if we can establish a top end that, you know, people that exceed the top end are not eligible for COLAs or merit, then I'm probably on board. Yep.
I know, it's not my deal, but I don't know if you can take a COLA away from somebody. I think you can, the merit, but I don't know if you-
Generally, if you're over the wage that, the range, if you're over the wage where there's a range, and you're over the range, you've already gotten all your COLAs and all your merit, and you're way overpaid. I could take you down to the top and give you a decrease in pay, but I don't think we can do that.
Here's been my history, so you have a range from $10.00 to $20.00 an hour, you have somebody making $20.50 an hour, and then you vote, as part of the budget package, we're going to take that to $11.21 an hour. Then they would get that difference, but only that difference, so if the COLA was two, they're still only going to get 50 cents, they're not going to get the entire COLA, but it's only if you move the range, I think that's kind of what John's talking about, is, that's all they're eligible for, but if they're way out there, so let's say, we've got some people that are way out there, several dollars above what would be top scale, then no, even if you move the scale, and they don't, they're still above that, they're not eligible for an increase. I don't, I mean, that's been my experience before. They're above it, they're above it.
When you give COLAs, the range shifts, or it should-
Right, that's a COLA, yeah.
That's when your whole range shifts. Not necessarily.
It's just that, a cost of living adjustment.
Well, it depends on where your range is at, I mean-
If your range is over top of-
Yeah, if your range is-
Under the max already being paid.
For you, say you're an equipment operator, your range is 10%, well, if our range is 20%, yeah, if we give a COLA, our range doesn't shift. I mean, our starting pay may come up, because, but our ending pay doesn't have to move.
I would think the COLA goes no matter what.
Yeah, but I-
And that's why I like going with the merits, because then you can use that sometimes to adjust-
Yeah, but that's kind of where we've gotten out of whack, too.
Because it doesn't take the range to move it up.
We did a bunch of firm ones.
We can move the range up whatever we want to, we don't have to see what the COLA is, we can fix-
It's been my experience that the COLA moves the range, but-
Right, we've always, last couple of years, decided that it moves.
And then there's a debate about that COLA, the COLA, what the cost of living index is, is probably what it should mean by, versus what we determine are the, you know, is the amount that we can afford.
The COLA that we give is a raise to try to keep people up with the cost of living. We have some people, and, you know, in EMS, that are way out of the range. I mean, it's several dollars over, I mean, you just can't continue to pay people for a job, I mean, obviously, if they take a promotion or whatever, you know, that job would pay something else, but, you know, for a certain job, that only pays X amount.
But that's kind of what you're saying, is the range would move, and until they fall within the range, they would just get the COLA, but once that range goes above the point that they're at, then they would get the difference, or whatever the COLA is.
You can't give, to me, you cannot give an employee who's been working there a 2% bump, because COLAs across the board, everybody gets 2%, if you don't move the range 2%, because then you've helped create that disparity that we're trying to fix, because if you don't move the range, you've got people who've worked here who continue to move up, but your range stays where it's at. Conversely, to Kristen's point, if people stay above that top end, they don't get anything, they don't get an increase, because they've exceeded the maximum amount that we, the county, are willing to pay them. Because of all this stuff that's happened in EMS, we're going to have some people there, regardless of what range we pick, we're going to have some people there. It's no one's fault, per se, but it's just what happened, or what has happened through the years, with the transition and all of that stuff. That's an anomaly, that's going to go away over time, but they won't get an increase until their salary actually falls back into the range, and then they're only going to get an increase to top end. So if they're making $24.75 an hour, and they're above the range, and we move the range so that it makes it to 25, I don't care what we give every employee, they're getting a quarter, because that takes them to top of, and that's how you help control your payroll costs. It's just, at least my experience, that's been the best way to help control it. And you have a wide enough range that people can continue to move up, it just depends on how wide you want it to be, but I will send you that this week and give you something to look at, because I took the liberty through this process to create a couple of ways to look at scales, based on what I did in the hospital, and what we did in the private side, and kind of help bring it to this side, based on what we're doing right now. So, I think if we do this, then we're done. Like I said, the 24-hour shifts for me, they're not coming back. It's, this is, I don't want to underestimate how painful this is. It's really difficult for a lot of people, but I believe as an EMS system, we'll be better off for it once it's all said and done. I still have people out there that are probably watching this right now, thinking, "I'm crazy, that's not going to be that way," but I really honestly believe it'll help make our system more efficient and give us the resources that we need, that we can count on overnight. So, you know, I'm willing to do it, but I do want to make sure that we send a message to the people that they're important, and we know this is a huge change for them, and we gave it in the past, we're going to give it now, and then, like I said, there's, the next step to that is, it's pretty logical to assume that there's going to be some folks that are displaced from days to nights, that have to go because of that. Now, there are people that want to work nights, that go to school, a variety of other family obligations, that want to stay on nights, but at the same time, there's no way to parse that out, so I just, that's why I just put this in there as something to talk about, but for us to really start getting some answers to this and help giving folks direction on where they're going to head, I was hopeful that we could get a decision on these two things today.
Have we never enforced a top end of the salary?
County law?
No. And we've never capped any position. So, do the three, and the two, and the dollar, are they going to take certain people way above the cap end of your range?
The three and the two are going to take some, but they've already taken some.
Depending on where our range is.
I don't have, it depends on what, how broad they want the range. I've seen ranges that have run 30% to 60%. I picked 40 and 50 as starting points to talk about, but it depends on how wide we make the range, and what the starting point is. There'll be a few, for sure.
But they still want to make as much as they were on the 24-hour shifts.
No.
So, they're taking it, it does soften it a bit, and I mean, we do need these guys, and we appreciate everything they do. They also got to appreciate the fact that the 24-hour shifts, I mean, you're getting paid basically to sleep, not work, I mean, just with the Fair Labor Standards Act, you got to have five hours of sleep, not, maybe not totally uninterrupted, but, you know, fairly continuous, and there's all kinds of rules there that I just, that's what I can swallow with 24-hour shifts, we're paying people to sleep, maybe they should have been making less per hour, and then we're paying them overtime on top of it, so, there's a lot of things, I didn't care about it, we're making some changes, they wanted us to make some changes, bring in a new director, that's what you recommended, so they can't be too mad about it, because it's part of what's being recommended. I'm fine with the $2.00 and $3.00 thing, I'm not sure about the night thing yet, and that's what I still like to chew on. I know it probably is harder to get some-
This is bad, I agree with you. There you go, see?
I'm just glad they've all stuck with us through this.
Help me, Chris, help me. They're ganging up.
Yeah. I mean, I just don't want to see, you know, other increases go on top of these $2.00 and $3.00. I mean, you know, obviously, if you're coming off 24s, you can pick nights or days, I don't care, but there should be no shift differential there. I mean, if you're going to pick days, fine, if you're going to pick nights, fine, I don't really care what you pick, but for most of these people that are on those 24-hour shifts, they're well-paid, and-
Maybe the night shifts aren't what everybody wants, but that's kind of where the new guys have to fill in, and if that's where we have an opening, if they want to get their foot in the door, that might be the shift they have to take to get started with Cole County EMS. I mean, they can go next door to a lot of other, the other neighboring counties EMSs, they're not going to get paid near the same, either, so. I'm fine with the two and three. If we vote today on night differential, I'm going to vote no on it for now, but I mean, you're looking at doing that right now, or January 1st?
No, first of the year, yeah, this all would be effective the 14th of January.
So, we still got a little time to, you know, consider that, but 24 hours is a pretty big, that's the bigger thing.
How about if I don't change the budget by $34,000, and I rob some other lines to make it budget still within the numbers that I have? to make it budget still within the numbers that I have now?
You'll have increased revenue from the rate changes.
Darn right. Well, no, I won't change that. I've already budgeted for that. I took it to 3.6 next year, so.
Okay.
We've got to hit 300,000 a month next year, every month, to make budget. I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to try and, and, because I, I really, I, I do think we owe to our folks to, to, to really help them through the transition. And, and I have a bit of a, a concern myself, and I want to be able to, to be able to continue to recruit folks. And sometimes that little nudge for, if the night shift is the one that's open, the little nudge is what it takes to get it over the top. I, I've, that's been my experience. So, um, if, if, uh, if you'd be willing to let Kristen and I work on the budget, try and find that $30,000 somewhere else, um, to get this into the salary line, I'd be willing to, to work on that.
So this would only be for.
Not changing it right now.
Only be for new people?
It would be for the, the 16 people that work nights, that are designated night shift, full-time people, not part-time, because payroll system won't do that.
Which could be some of these 24-hour shifts that are going to turn to 12s?
Well, if you say they don't, if they're not eligible for it, then, then they're, they wouldn't be three and four. They'd still be two and three. So again, like I said, the 34 is not going to be 34, because that took into account, every night shift was getting the dollar, and it won't if it's just full-time people. You know, with vacations, holidays and all that, I would hazard a guess it'd be half that, maybe, in total.
So your $2 and $3 bumps would be exempt from the dollar bump?
That's their call.
But what about the ones who ended in 24-hour shifts before that got the bumps already? Do we say they're not eligible for it either? Where do you?
Well, see, that's, that's to me where it all comes into play. I'm not saying somebody's not eligible for the dollar an hour night shift differential. But, you know, obviously, if you're coming off 24s, you got to pick. And I mean, most of those people are at the upper end of the scale. And I mean, obviously, everybody can't work days. We can have a rotating shift where everybody works nights and days. You know, that's, the shift's up to, to us. I mean, they can rotate. You can do nights or days, or you can do one or the other. Some people like nights, some people like days. Um, but, uh, you know, to me.
We rotate, but we, we do rotate. Um, but predominantly, law enforcement do rotate. So what he's competing against is there's other EMS agencies out there that still do the 24 hours. So if, uh, whenever he gets ready to, to, to hire somebody, um, that, that nudge that he's talking about, that could come into, uh, great play with him. Now, law enforcement, we typically do a 28-day rotation. That's the majority of law enforcement agencies out there. That's what they still do.
And I, I hope we don't lose anybody over this, but my assumption is there's probably some folks out there that need 24 hours bad enough that we, we may very well lose them. And so I just want to be able to compete. Like I said, right now, I have no applicants for part-time paramedic positions. And if I don't have applicants for part-time, makes me wonder if I'm going to have applicants for full-time. When we open these positions up, once we know, uh, I purposely haven't opened any full-time positions yet, because I don't know where, where all the dominoes are going to fall. So I don't know what shifts are going to be available. That's, again, why we need to start addressing some of these, these issues.
Now, is that something that's just pertains to us, or is that kind of other, talking to other ambulance districts?
There's a bit of a paramedic shortage nationwide, a bit. They can make more money being cops.
Really, if you want to be the best service in the county, the best service in the state and the country, 24 hours is the worst thing to have on there, because if you're coming to save my life, I want somebody fresh. I don't want somebody that's been there for 24 hours. I don't care if you just got up from your five-hour nap, you're still going to probably be groggy, maybe not going at full speed. Um, I don't know. I've just not, not been crazy about the 24 hours from day one. And that's one of the things that we preached, is being the best in the county, state, country.
Charlie, it sounds like we're okay with the three-hour, two-hour. We're still just trying to chew a little bit on the, the dollar night. So.
I'll be honest with you, what, what, what I think is probably right now the fairest for everybody is the $2 and $3, we've done that before. So it keeps it consistent. We've set precedent, we've done that. So, so do that. And then if you're going to offer the dollar, anybody who picks a night shift gets the dollar, just regardless. And you don't have to worry about who got it before and who's getting it now, or any of that stuff, then just give it to them. Because like I said, it's going to be less than that amount of money anyway, because that takes into account that everybody works every shift. And I was thinking in my head, um, that if payroll does that, that's what we would do. But if, if it's too difficult for payroll to do, then I would say only those designated, the 16 people who are designated to cover the night shift would get it. So when they're on vacation and we have part-time fill-in and what have you, then there's, the dollar an hour doesn't go. And with 16 people all getting several weeks off during the year, that's going to reduce that amount significantly.
So a part-time fill-in would not get?
They wouldn't get it. So that's the most, that, that number won't happen. There's no way that number will happen. 16 people aren't going to work all their shifts all year. It's not going to happen. So that's, that number's high.
And if they switch to a day shift, they lose the dollar?
If you, if you guys can do that in the system.
Just to pay for them.
For one, to pay for them for a day, for one day?
Oh, for one day, no. I thought.
No, if they switch after sex and.
Oh, if they switch, absolutely, yes. Yes. If they move from nights to days, it's just like moving from 24s to 12s now. You lose whatever you had. Yeah. Yeah. That, that would be a pay for them. But I can't, I don't know, and again, that'd be Debbie's question more than me. If that night shift person picked up a day shift, I don't think we have any way to change their pay for that one shift. So, again, like I said, the $34,000 number took into account that everybody working every night shift got the dollar. That's not going to be the case. My guess is it's going to be more like 50 to 60% of that. And on a $2.5 million payroll budget, that's not even a dent.
I think the dollar an hour differential is going to be a nightmare. I mean.
Well, when I'm treated as different.
Well, we can establish a night shift pay line. So it's just a dollar an hour above. So if starting pay, I think it's 1728 right now. So starting pay for nights would be 1828 based on the existing.
It would only, it would only be when you take the position.
Right.
With the dollar bump.
Only new, only new positions? Not current positions?
Well, that's.
I would suggest it would be the first, the first 16 that take it and everybody that take that shift thereafter, and anybody that moves out of it loses it.
So, I mean, I think your people do a great job, but here again, we're, we're going to give people a dollar an hour raise for doing the job that they're already doing. And we're not even talking about raises at the end of the year. I mean, we're just talking about a bump. I mean, some people already want the night shift. That's the shift that they have. And we're just going to give them a dollar an hour. I mean, not that they don't deserve it, but that's the part that's hard for me to swallow. I mean.
Again, it's what, it's, it seems like no matter where EMS is, it's just a different animal. It's kind of partly healthcare, partly public safety, and it's trying to balance between the both. And, um, there's so many agencies out there that offer these differentials. It just helps us be competitive. I, I get completely what you're saying. Um, and more than anything else in this case, it just, um, I'm trying to be an advocate for the folks down there. It's going to, there's going to be some people displaced that have worked days for a long time that are not going to be working nights. And so, you know, it's just, it helps soften the blow a little bit. So, um, I, I get completely what you're saying, but I just, it, it, it helps us. The big picture of this for me personally is it helps soften the blow for the folks now, and it helps us be competitive when we have open night shifts. Because in all honesty, that's probably what we're going to have down the road. Uh, we're going to have, we're going to have a system where there's going to be probably six to eight people that will stay on nights because that fits for them. And the other group is going to migrate to days as their day shift openings. So we're going to probably recruit and hire people to work the night shift. And it just helps us recruit and compete with, um, we can't compete with Boone and, and the U for money. We, we, we can't. Um, they, they pay a couple bucks an hour more than we do. But it helps us compete with them, um, you know, for the night shift. So that, that's, those are my issues.
So the other option would be to have a separate starving salary for the night shift?
And that's what I would say.
If the people that are currently moving are below that, you could give them the bump. But if they're already there, they don't get it. So if you wanted to start.
There'd be a range for that.
Right. If you wanted to start.
We don't do that now, though.
If the night shift to be a dollar more than the starting pay for a day shift, you could do that. But anybody that's currently above that rate wouldn't get a bump.
But we don't, we don't do that now with the 12s and 24s. It's, it's a dollar 26 difference either way, when we do the pay for them, when they move shifts. So I would think we'd have to do it the same way here. There'd be a dollar an hour difference in between shifts, either up or down, based on where they, they worked.
But there again, if they're out of the range.
Oh, if they're out of the range, if they're, if you approve the, the salary range, and I would suggest that you approved one that I gave you or come up with your own. Um, if they're out of that range, it's, it's a non-issue. It's a non-factor. Because there would be a range for night shift, and it would be a dollar above the day shift. So like right now, I said, I think 1728's starting salary for paramedic. We'd have night shift, paramedic would be 1828, and then whatever the EMT was. So there would be a line there in the, in the, um, salaries for, for EMS that would, would delineate days and nights. So there would be pay forms for movement in between shifts, and it would only affect the full-time staff.
So if you're part-time and you work nights?
Part-time is, you do work nights and you get the regular pay.
You get regular pay. Okay, they're regular pay.
Yeah, because we have.
Somebody goes on vacation, somebody from day shift works that.
They would get regular pay.
They get a regular pay.
Again, what it comes down to is our, our system just won't, won't handle that movement back and forth. And I'm not doing a pay for them every time they switch a shift. That would be too.
So the dollar would be just for the full-time?
Yeah. So this $34,000 that I sent you in the email is, is high, because that factors in everybody working every shift on the night shift gets the dollar, and that won't happen. Because you have 16 people who all get two weeks off. That's 32 weeks. Now, they won't take it all, but I would say that easily you could bump that down to 20, if not more. What would really be a risk with the dollar?
I get two weeks off and paid holidays and any time that they've built up.
Right. Now, they won't, like I said, they won't take it all that year. But even if, if everybody took a week, which most people do over the course of a year, you're looking at half that number right there. Because you have, no, not quite half, not half. But more, people take more than a week, more than five working days off during a year.
I'm, I'm good with it as long as we establish a range that we can all agree on.
You'll have it in your inbox this afternoon. You'll have a couple ranges that I've worked on, uh, for you to look at.
I'm good with the two.
I'm good with the $2 and $3 part of the night differential, still. Sure enough. You can keep it in the budget. We can adjust it.
Yeah.
That's, we can sit here and talk all day about it. Won't sleep on it. It makes sense to me, but at the same time, it causes a lot of headaches. So right now, I'd rather see if we can do without it. But we got to tell January 1st. Okay, December.
You've got lots of decisions to make compared to the first.
I'll be honest, I, the, it's no more headaches than the two shift types we have now, 12s and 24s. It's no different. Got the pay form system down. So that, I'm not worried about that at all.
Okay. You guys need anything else, or?
So you're good with the two and the three?
I'm good with the two and the three with, with a range and a max. So.
So they don't get the two and the three if they go over the max?
No, they get the two and the three, but.
So the two and the three now with a max set?
Yeah.
Right. So they automatically, not automatically, those displaced get the two and the three. And then we'll establish a range as part of the budget process. And if they're over it, they won't get increases moving forward unless there's something moves the range.
I'm okay with moving the range based on the COLA, whether that be the index. I think it should be the index. I don't think it should be our COLA, because our COLA's trying to catch up. It should be whatever the index is. And that's not always 2%, it's what, half?
Are you going to decide which seat you had a rate in one of you?
Right. But it could, it could move according to the index.
Things like that, and then there's something, or you just, you can decide which seat you had a rate you want to be.
I mean, we, I would think we're probably the third highest pay, highest paid EMS service probably in, in this area.
In the region, yeah.
Okay. Good. Go for it there, Mr. Chairman.
Just for our meeting next week with the staff, is, what about, is, is the dollar an hour a no, or is the dollar an hour under advisement? We're going to look at the budget?
Mom said yes. We're still got to check with Dad. Well, it's a definite possibly maybe. I'm not saying no to it completely. If I got to vote on it today, I'm saying no. But.
We shouldn't vote today.
Well, I think with the understanding that it's, it's full-time, it's not, it's not our, our part-time. And if somebody ends up taking that shift, uh, you know, they're not going to get the doll, I mean, just to fill in. So it's just for the people that are, that are on the.
I can also put together some.
Night shift. I think that's, I, I.
I can also put together some models and give you some, some, uh, estimates that, that are based on calculations and say if everybody on the night shift takes a week's off, takes one week off a year, here's what it'll cost. If they take 10 days off, here's what it'll cost. So we can kind of gauge based on some, some data.
But you're still going to pay their time off at a higher rate. You're just not going to pay the person filling the shift at the higher rate?
No, we're not.
That's true.
So you're still going to pay their time off at the higher rate?
Okay. Never mind.
So you're saving the person filling the shift, but most of the time they're probably working overtime, so you're paying them time to shift. I don't know. It's just, there's a lot of variables.
Yeah.
We've always bitched about overtime. It's.
Yeah. I'd just like to see how all that plays out.
Okay.
And maybe look at it on an individual basis and see, you know, where that is, especially with these 24s going to 12s. I think that.
Basically, two and three, we're, we're good with. We're still.
Move on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
They actually brought me the Keefe contracts. I had Jill look at them if I can go ahead and take care of this before. And I want you to do it on Tuesday. Two minutes.
Okay.
Is this the Accra Control Computer?
No, this is Keefe.
Oh, oh, okay.
And so this is the new agreement we.
So is this under old business then?
It's already on.
Yeah, it was, this was up here.
This is one you sent me.
Uh, pre-signed contract with.
They brought me a contract after.
With Keefe for inmate commissary.
Right. And what it does is increases our, our commissary rate from 12% to 33%. So their pay has to be there. Uh, it gives us kiosks inside the pods, which is going to reduce some of the manpower that we have when we're dealing with the green sheets and some other aspects. And then it's also going to put some vending machines in our honor pods, which is again, uh, like I was telling you about ABL, our correction, about Trinity, our new, uh, food vendor. Um, they do this, uh, they do an honor food for them, too. So it increases the behavior. You do, you do, you behave well in jail for certain things that we're going to let you do. So they work themselves down to the minimum, to the honor pod. So. So my recommendations to do it, I've already showed Jill, she's made some changes, they made the changes to it.
Guys, good?
Yeah.
I maybe we sign the contract with Keefe for inmate commissary?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Seven.
This is for $57,006. This is actual additional money in Rogue Bridge's surplus property that they traded in and sold different surplus items, that they're wanting and needing that money to be put back into equipment so they can buy some type of boat. I assume you guys know about that. So, no actions then, 10 days, it will come back up.
Is that it?
Any other business?
Any other business before we go into close?
One item in favor, just permission from the commission. As we go into our surplus property items the other day, we took, I think it's called Smart Board, I believe probably came with the truck, big mobile communication unit purchase. It's outdated. We removed that instead of spending a lot of money, otherwise, we replaced that with this basic flat screen for our dollar TV. So it's going up for public in our, now lost the brand name.
It's not currently on?
It's not currently on our inventory. Gary Hill, the police chief of Lincoln, has requested if there's a way we could give that to him instead of going through the surplus property auction, which I'm fine with, just get permission from the commission to do that. It's still operable, it's just kind of outdated for our use, something they can use. And again, it's not on our inventory itself. So just wanted to make sure, Dr. Christian says along with commission approval, we can do that. Let them have it to use.
What's the value of it?
Originally, I'd say.
No, I mean, what are we going to get on surplus, or anything like $12 for it?
You might get 20 bucks.
So if you pay more repaying to give it a number and to sell it than it would be to be a good neighbor with Lincoln and give it to them.
It's something they can use.
Unless you all got something else.
No, I'm fine, I think that's.
I think Gary should have to come up and buy you guys soda pops or something.
No, I should at least come up and request it himself.
Yeah.
In person, because, you know, he never comes.
He was really pretty carrying a purse around that night, the country club though.
You know, he leaves and he hasn't been to a car, you know.
Power of persons.
Kind of hurts.
Yeah. Tell me he's come up here and we'll present it to you.
I'm fine with it.
Take a selfie.
I don't want to carry up here.
Take a selfie.
Free up to get it down. Yeah, pretty good. But anyway, I just thought that the commission would prove that, we can allow it.
Just glad somebody's got a use for it.
Yeah, I think that's, I think.
Besides fishing weight or bug weight or something.
That's okay with you, that's what we'll do, I'll get old Gary, he can get it now.
I think that's, that's fine.
You good?
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you know you owe me something.
That's right.
Anything else before we go into closed session?
I maybe we go into closed session. Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for security issues, sub-18.
Second.
Okay.
Sam?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Did you need anything?
No, I'm just waiting for that transfer.